Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
We see her.
Here.
Councilmember Burke is participating virtually. Can you hear us okay, Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, and would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and would you join the City Council and me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third time. Thank you, recognize our started in arms tonight, Lieutenant Ryan Phillips. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of the following items. There are three zoning petitions. It's an item approving an economic development assistance agreement, an item related to a unified development ordinance tax amendment, an item granting an extension of the franchise for the operation of the Haynes Mill Road landfill, as well as a closed session. The zoning petitions, the economic development item, and the U D O text amendment, and the item granting extension for the franchise at Haynes Mill Road landfill are listed as public hearings. When these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the opponents and the proponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the City Council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Wednesday at 9:30 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just clicking on the watch meetings online option. Would you please read the first item, Ms. Kenny?
Item Z1, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of Hubbard Realty of Winston-Salem from RS9 to RM5S. Property is located on the south side of Somerset Drive west of Sparkling Place, in the east side of Lockwood Drive, north of Caraway Lane, located in the southwest ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the June 6th, August 2nd, September 6th, and October 3rd, 2022 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Councilmembers, before we move into discussion of this item, Councilmember Taylor has asked to be excused from consideration of this item, so may I have a motion from someone that would excuse Councilmember Taylor?
I move to remove Councilmember Taylor from this item.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Councilmember McIntosh?
If I could just ask the City Attorney what policy is on this, I'm just unaware. Don't we have policy around when we're allowed to?
Ms. Carmen?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and councilmembers. Councilmembers may ask to be excused when there is a conflict or appearance of a conflict in zoning matters. It's a question of whether or not this conflict may have an impact on the case at hand. And so I think Councilmember Taylor feels that he has a conflict that warrants this being removed from this particular item or consideration of this item.
Thank you. All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Taylor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Mayor, we'll need a voice vote for Councilmember.
Okay, all those in favor of excusing Councilmember Taylor, please indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed, no. And that's unanimous, Councilmember Taylor, you're excused from participating and voting on this item. We'll now move into the consideration of item Z1, which is the public hearing. We hear first from the proponents. First, Bruce Hubbard, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, while he's coming up, can we make sure the record reflects how Councilmember Burke voted? I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Burke, did you vote yea or nay on the motion to excuse Councilmember Taylor?
Yes, I voted yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
To excuse Councilmember Taylor.
Good, thank you, Councilmember Burke.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hubbard, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Bruce Hubbard at 1598 Westbrook Plaza Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I'm the owners of Hubbard Realty, and I'm here tonight to hopefully, in your support of the proposed community, and answer any questions that you might have. We've been developing in Winston-Salem since the 1970s, and this is another community we'd like to have available for our community residents who live in the area, so I'm here to answer questions if you have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Luke Dickey? We're having a little bit of trouble hearing you, so Mr. Dickey, if you could get a little closer to the mic there, pull it up closer to you, that'd be great.
Yep, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and council.
That works.
Very good. Luke Dickey with Stimol Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. Thank you for the opportunity to present this case to you tonight. Stimol Associates was hired by True Homes. Jeff Gurnear is here as well to answer any questions that you have, and he signed up to speak after me. Go ahead, I got a presentation that is set up, if you could please get that on screen for me. Next slide, please. So just kind of give an idea about where this site is. You can see it highlighted in red. Somerset Drive is to the north. Jonestown Road is to the south. Stratford Road is to the east.
Our screens aren't working.
It's on a delay, it should come up.
There it is. Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, I'll just restart then, real quick here. We got Somerset Drive to the north, where the site actually has a little bit of frontage there on the northeast corner. Stratford Road, you can see there, is to the east of the site, where Somerset ties into it. Jonestown Road loops around from the south and to the west side, and then we have frontage on Lockwood Drive, then they're down basically in the southwest corner. So those are the two locations that we have access onto public streets for this 88-acre site. You can see where Brandywine is there, just to the east, there's two roads that stub almost to the site, Gamble and Sloan, but there's an intervening private property that does not allow us to connect in that location. Next slide, please. The area plan, and everything calls for this to be single-family residential, that's for zero to eight units per acre. If you look at an RS9, which is what the zoning is, that permits you up to about 4.8 units per acre overall. If you were just look at the overall size of the 88 acres, that'll allow for about 426 lots, if that, if we could develop on that entire site from a density standpoint. Next slide, please. Here's the site plan that we are proposing. Our request is rezone from the RS9 to RM5. A lot of the, as we kind of mentioned, with the RS9 density is 4.8, so RM5 is a five-unit per acre, so they're very comparable in densities for what you can do from a development standpoint. What rezoning to RM5 then allows us to do is to introduce a housing mix. So instead of just all single-family residential lots, we're proposing to add in townhouses in this development here. The townhouses are limited to basically three units tied together and four units, so that keeps the scale down, so we don't have six or eight or more units kind of tied together. So again, this is all about scale and density that we're looking at. The proposed plan that we have here is, we got the main connection to Somerset Drive, we have worked and pushed that as far east as we possibly can, because we got that curve in that location, and working with Winston DOT and our traffic impact analysis, we'll have to provide road improvements in that area. That includes a left turn lane and then a right slip lane that comes into the site, and we also have to look at the site distance when we go into the final engineering for that, for the speeds that are on that curve. The main road then kind of comes and loops around. What we've done is we've positioned the single-family lots around the perimeter, and we put the townhouses within the interior, so then they're isolated. So as you can see, with all the surrounding neighborhoods that back up onto this piece, it's either going to be backing up onto a single-family lot, or there's a lot of natural vegetation in area that's going to remain in that. Then we have our tie that comes down to Lockwood, so we need, just because of the amount of units that we have, we have to have a secondary means of access, and that's our only other location that we can make that connection. Overall, this plan proposes is 231 units, 69 is those single-family lots that wrap around the perimeter. For previous plans, you might have saw on the docket from what we continued, those lots were 40-foot wide. What we're proposing on this plan is 55-foot wide lots, so much wider than what was originally proposed, and closer to what the RS9 minimum is, which is 65-foot. And then we have 162 townhouses within that. So overall, the proposed density is 2.62 units per acre. So the maximum RS9 is 4.8, here we have 2.62, which is quite comparable to all the other development that is around in this area. Huntington Woods is roughly a 1.87, so that's kind of the, with the larger lots there down to the south, and then Seasons Chase, which is a little bit further up, which is a PRD that was done, that has 39 lots, so that's actually like 3.8 units per acre. So again, it's very comparable with what we're looking for from a single-family residential density. What we feel is this is a good product, because it does provide that housing mix and opportunities for different types of price points in this location, and so being, containing the townhouses in the center then, again, is isolating those, and then we're wrapping again to protect the neighborhoods as we go from the largest product to a smaller product in the interior. Next slide, please. This kind of gives you an idea then, what that perimeter is going to be, so we have a developmental area of 51 acres, with the majority of that to the north. So we have streams that kind of bisect it, and then we also have a flood plain with the creek there on the western side, so those are the areas that we're protecting and not developing within. We are keeping, basically, all are limited to the stream crossing there to get to Lockwood Drive, and there's some little bit of wetlands there that we'll have to cross as well, so we're trying to limit our impacts as much as possible to the site for its developability. Next slide, please. This is kind of just example of the housing style that would fit on a 55-foot wide lots, just kind of give you an idea of what those houses could look like, and these are True Home products. Next slide. And then these are the townhouses that are kind of being proposed. You can see you can do a mix of different facades and materials on this to break up the scale, and these are one-car garage kind of units from that, and these are shown at 21 feet wide. Next slide, please. Kind of as a comparison, we were kind of charged with the kind of look at for this site, was really kind of getting an understanding of what could be developed by right on it, and this would be a case for a planned residential development, which goes to planning board for review. And so we kind of looked at, you know, taking the same road network that we had, what was the density that we could achieve with that, then also that would help us generate a traffic comparison, to kind of get an idea about what would a single-family, all-residential do from a traffic analysis standpoint, and then what would our proposed RM5 do. So what you see here is just kind of a concept plan of what that would be, it's comparable about 234 lots, units. Obviously, this is not something that you're reviewing to approve, but we just kind of want to give a basis of kind of how we review this site through different cycles. It's also one of the reasons why we've had so many continuances on this, as we've tried to work with neighbors, get an understanding, and work out other options. For instance, we also looked at the opportunity to tie to Gamble, that then come to fruition because of the property owner that owned that piece did not want us to cross, and so we had to kind of backtrack back from where we were. So if you go to the next slide, please, it's kind of giving an idea about what we're looking at from traffic, because we understand that safety is a concern with what this development would be, especially with its access on Somerset, and then also the access on Lockwood. So on top of our proposed RM5 plan, you can see we're working with Davenport Engineers, and so we have them here also to answer any questions that you have in regards to this. For single-family then, we see we got the 69 units and the 162, so the total of 231. Daily, that generates about just over 1,900 trips on a 24-hour basis. Looking at the RS9 PRD option, which is 234 lots, it would generate 2,206 trips. The original site plan that we had, which had 40-foot wide lots, you can see this kind of breakdown there was 1,931, so while we went from 216 units to 231, we actually have less traffic generation because the townhouses generate less traffic than a standard single-family lot. So overall, what we were proposing with this RM5 plan is it's 30 trips less per day than what our original plan was with the 40-foot wide lots, and then we're 305 fewer daily trips than the 36-foot wide RS9 PRD option. So we feel that this is a good plan that provides not only different housing types and from a market price points, but also one that also then adds to the safety of the area, generates less traffic than what can be developed by right with a PRD plan. Next slide, please. This is kind of representative of what we did from a reach out for the neighborhood, so everything you see highlighted in red is what we had sent out our original invitations to that very first meeting, that represented 433 property owners. We did an online kind of call with that, received 10 phone calls at that time, then we had 50 neighbors roughly attend the drop-in session, it was hard to exactly track how many logged in in the meeting, but we've had multiple calls, correspondence with neighborhood representatives since that time, trying to work out options for the site plans, looking at different connections, and address kind of concerns to what we could. You'll hear probably from the opposition tonight that are against this with their concerns, but we tried to come to a point where we come to an agreement, and we just may not have been able to get there at that point, but we've worked our best we can with them to, to find ways that we can mitigate their concerns. Next slide, please. So overall, there is a significant demand for housing needs within the Somerset Heights area submarket. Mr. Jeff Gurnear can, can address that, as obviously True Homes has looked at this market, and that's why they want to be here, as they analyze that. The rezoning request does represent an infill residential project that provides additional housing types and price points that appeal to a more diverse population. So think about a townhouse is a little bit smaller footprint, a little more maintenance-free, so if you want to stay in the neighborhood, where do you go if you want to downsize? And this gives you that kind of that opportunity. The overall design and proposed density is compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. Again, we're talking about 2.6 units per acre, which is very compatible with the single-family, which allows up to 4.8. The adjacent neighborhoods back up to either single-family lots or natural areas that are going to remain. Again, we worked with neighbors and city staff on improving access to address safety concerns and explore alternatives, and this is where the plan that we ended up having to land on, just because we're limited to access on Somerset and onto Lockwood. The request is consistent with the legacy and area plan recommendations. Staff and planning board had recommended approval of this meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. Any questions, Mr. Dickey, at this time? All right, and then we had Jeff.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I couldn't quite read your writing here for your last name, Jeff, so if you correct me.
Thank you, Mayor, it's Jeff Gurnear.
Gurnear.
Yeah, yeah, I get it wrong sometimes, too. Councilmembers, thank you for the time. My name is Jeff Gurnear, I'm with True Homes, 2649 Breckenridge Center Drive in Monroe, North Carolina, 28111. I'm here to answer questions and, and respond to any of the opponents' concerns with our neighborhood, and welcome the opportunity, and, and we'll do so respectfully, so when we get to that point, I'll be here for you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, we'll now turn to the opponents. We have a number of individuals signed up, and again, we'll have 15 minutes of time there, then three minutes for rebuttal. First person signed up is Ronald Buchanan. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Ronald Buchanan, I live at 1772 Huntington Woods Court. Mayor John, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, City Council members, good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone against rezoning, please say. Thank you. I enjoy the presence of many retirees, working families, and young couples with newborns to teenagers. Huntington Woods Court is often crowded with neighborhood joggers, walkers, dog walkers, skateboarders, and bouncycocks all times of the day. We are already densely populated with street parking and narrow streets. With the lack of sidewalks and curving, our community is already crowded, and yet we maintain a safe and respectable court existence. The addition of significant traffic access will surely upset this balance, decreasing family safety, yet increasing the possibility of accidents. Huntington Woods and Lockwood Drive is a strong, diverse, cohesive community. I oppose the zoning change for the following reasons. Increased traffic in and throughout our community. Increased traffic on Jonestown Road, which is already too congested for the many homes and businesses that exist. A decrease in responsiveness of emergency vehicles. Listen to the citizens of our community. Make our community a safer and better place to live. Vote against rezoning, thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Lawson, 1004 Somerset Drive, 27103. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all this evening. On the morning of August 6th last year, my day began with what felt like an earthquake and transpired to be a utility pole landing in my front yard, tearing the power lines from my home in the process. I stepped out my front door to see a young woman dragging herself through broken glass to exit her overturned vehicle, a mere 15 feet from my neighbor's front yard, where her six- and three-year-old play on a daily basis. While this incident may sound like a drastic example, it is by no means an isolated issue. Mailboxes are hidden destroyed on Somerset as a regular occurrence, my own included. Parents have to trek through yards to avoid being hit when walking their kids to and from the school bus. December 2020 presented a crash fatality at the very curve developers originally proposed as the entrance to their site, the same site that 21 days ago was the site of a hit-and-run. We are not telling you that vehicles will become a problem should this rezoning be granted. We are telling you that they already are. A marginal move of the entrance will not mitigate this. At the council meeting on May 12, Planning Board member Mo McCray described the 88 acres in question as landlocked, and Vice Chair Melinda Danigan rightly identified the only two possible entry and exit points to the site as a curvy road and a small neighborhood street. Allowing this rezoning to go ahead would be inviting incidents like the ones previously mentioned to increase exponentially. Not a single person here today is asking for this plot to remain undeveloped. We simply ask that the safety of existing residents be taken into account, which right now, True Home seems to be completely disregarding, despite their claims. The traffic report anticipates an increase of approximately 2,000 car rides per day on the streets in question, yet not a single agency, department, or individual involved in this project has provided a solid and legitimate commitment to address and mitigate the immense number of traffic safety concerns. This is a case of prioritizing absorption rates and monetary gain over human lives, with zero regard for the damage existing residents will be left to live with. We are asking you to vote no on rezoning, to force accountability on developers to devise a plan that prioritizes safety, a plan that does not incur an overwhelming influx of vehicles that our curvy roads and small neighborhood streets simply cannot accommodate, a plan that does not further endanger these children and the many more like them within our neighborhoods. Thank you so much for your time.
Darrell Hawkins?
Good evening, Mayor Johns, and City Council members, thank you.
Evening.
I'm Darrell Hawkins, and I live at 2277 Ashford Drive, Winston-Salem. In the Legacy 2030 Plan, one of the primary goals is to increase overall residential density in GMAs 1, 2, and 3. Our neighborhoods and the proposed development are GMA 3. We are zoned RS9, which calls for a minimum of a 9,000-square-foot lot, equating to the density of 4.8 homes per acre. The density of the existing surrounding neighborhoods encompassing over 600 homes averages 2.5 homes per acre. Therefore, the current zoning allows for 60% higher home density than our existing neighborhoods already. As told to us by the developer True Homes, the primary reason that they would build these small detached homes and townhomes is to increase sales velocity. They acknowledge they could make more money if they build larger homes suited to the RS9 zoning. More importantly to the city, the property tax revenues would also be higher. There is no need to rezon in order to increase home density. Another goal of the Legacy Plan states, quote, "Specific strategies can then be formulated to protect and improve the character of each growth management area," end quote. The proposed plan neither protects nor improves the character of the area. The developer has stated that they intend to submit a PRD plan if this rezoning request is not approved. A specific requirement of the PRD standard states, quote, "The character of a PRD should be appropriate to the GMA in which the PRD is located along the urban to rural continuum," end quote. We ask you to require the planning department to reject a PRD application on the basis of this specific requirement. Finally, as a local Realtor, I should be excited about this project, but I'm not. I am realistic about the overall negative impact this highly-dense neighborhood would have on our surrounding residents. This development would reduce the local housing shortage by 1.4%, but I have zero doubt that the number of traffic and especially pedestrian incidents on Somerset, Lockwood, Jonestown, and Brandywine would increase significantly more than 1.4% annually. We ask you to vote no on this rezoning request, thank you.
Jim Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, my name is Jim Sullivan. I live at 2594 Brandywine Road at Winston-Salem. Mayor Johns, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the council. My family and I moved here eight years ago from Virginia and built our home at this address because of the quiet and peaceful setting in this part of the city, and because of the very low amount of traffic on Brandywine Road. We invested our life savings in doing so after my retirement from a 42-year career and education. There was no indication at the time of our building in 2014 that there would ever be a cause for a major increase in amount of traffic on an 18 and a half-foot wide Brandywine Road running directly in front of our home. We clearly understand and appreciate the fact that things change over time, especially in the area of housing, which generates the change in traffic flow. While we acknowledge this fact, our hope was, and still is, that the city will always keep in mind the need to protect the best interest of the safety of the established residents in the community. The inevitable increase in traffic flow on Brandywine Road and Denzmore Street due to the impending Somerset Heights project should be anticipated, and proactive efforts taken about widening the streets and installing sidewalks for the safety of the residents and other folks who use these streets for walking, running, and cycling. This is absolutely crucial for the residents of the group home located on Brandywine. In order to keep the increase in traffic flow at a minimum, and thereby protect the safety and welfare of residents in the Brandywine area and the surrounding neighborhoods, I strongly urge you as a council to vote against the rezoning of the proposed Somerset Heights development. If True Homes or any other developer chooses to build housing units on this property, we respectfully request that the housing patterns be similar to houses in the surrounding neighborhoods with frontages of at least 55 feet. This would meet the present RS zoning standard, meaning fewer houses being built on the property. This would also keep the increased traffic flow in our neighborhoods to a minimum. I implore you as a council to not sacrifice the safety and welfare of the surrounding neighborhoods, so developers can turn a faster profit at the expense of established residents. Please help us with this issue, thank you.
William McIntyre?
Good evening, Mayor Johns, and City Council members. I'm Bud McIntyre, 1681 Little Creek Circle. I want to focus your attention to pedestrian and traffic safety on Lockwood Drive and other impacted streets in the Huntington Woods and Little Creek neighborhoods. Next slide, please. In the proposed development, Lockwood Drive is one of two entry-exit points. It is only 19 feet wide, with a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour, which is barely wide enough for two cars, and no room for pedestrians, as you can wide enough for two cars and no room for pedestrians, as you can see in the photo. There we go. It's a tape measure, and we measured it out at 19 feet. The developer's traffic impact analysis incorrectly said that it's a 21-foot-wide street and a 35 mile-per-hour speed limit. Surrounding streets are much the same. According to our recent survey of pedestrian use, neighbors walk 4.7 times per week, with 80% using Lockwood and Briar Lake Drives, often with a pet or with children. Based on the TIA, vehicular trips on Lockwood Drive will increase to nearly 800, approximately five times the current level, which is serious enough. However, there are two significant errors in the TIA's safety considerations. The first is cut-through traffic from Somerset to Lockwood to Jonestown Road. The planning department has repeatedly stressed to us the importance of connectivity, and we agree that this is very likely to be considerable and add traffic to Lockwood Drive. The second is the assumption, with no basis in fact, that the Somerset entry-exit will be the primary access. With many employment centers on this side, the Lockwood Drive access could very well be equal to Somerset Drive, especially when cut-through traffic is considered. The fact that neither of these key traffic determinants has even been considered seriously underestimates the traffic and safety impacts on Lockwood Drive and surrounding streets. Lastly, the intersection of Lockwood Drive and Jonestown Road is already a dangerous crossing. The TIA erroneously stated that the speed limit on Jonestown Road is 30 miles per hour, when it is actually 45 and most cars go faster than that. The TIA also included no accident data for this intersection, and when combined with the speed limit error, means that this intersection is far worse under existing conditions. Now consider the addition of another 1,200 car trips per day at that intersection, which hasn't even been accounted for. The decision is now in your hands. We respectfully plead with you to either deny this rezoning, or if approved, require improvements to the existing streets impacted by the proposed development that are equal to the city's standards. We are nearly 600 property owners who have paid taxes to the city for decades. Should we not be given equal consideration of our families' safety? We hope that you will picture yourselves living in our neighborhood and do the right thing. Thank you.
Good evening. Joseph Anderson, 1862 Lake Point Drive. The requested rezoning is safe in the context of this site, and for that reason, it must be denied. You know, the members of this council, folks, are the gatekeepers protecting the community, the health, the safety, and the welfare of this community. Why in the proposed development would there be 26-foot-wide roads with sidewalks? The answer's simple. It's for traffic safety and pedestrian safety. But we who have lived here and paid taxes for many decades and who would be forced to live adjacent to this high-density development would have no such protections if this is allowed to pass. And our elders and our children who walk and bicycle in our narrow streets will be put at risk, put in danger. It's serious, and that's why this room is full every single time this matter comes up. They don't get worn out. They keep coming back because it's serious. The opposition to this neighborhood development isn't just from one neighborhood or a few people. It represents a coalition of every community and nearly every property owner. In fact, in Autumn Chase, Councilmember Monday's neighborhood, 38 of 39 residents are in opposition. And there's good reason for it. It's this council's responsibility to be the gatekeeper, the protector of this community, and not accept any and all development as positive, because some of them aren't. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Shirley, oh, Paul Howerson.
That wasn't there.
Okay, all right.
I second every team's suggestion.
Okay, thank you. 25 seconds left. Anybody who wants to make a comment? All right, I will now go back to the rebuttal time, and for the proponents, you would have three minutes for any rebuttal you might want to offer.
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. There was one statement issued that, I don't know where it came from, but the RS9 option of development does not generate more revenue or more profits for us. In fact, it generates between 25 and 30% less. The reality is, the PRD option is the better option financially for us to pursue. It generates 10% more revenue based on the same cost to develop the site. Just a few points I wanted to make. You know, YRM5 versus the PRD, the RS9 PRD option, it generates 14% less traffic than the 36-foot-wide PRD option, R9 PRD option. The variety of home styles offered appeals to a more diverse population and a wider breadth of price points. The price range of homes offered will be more affordable opportunities. The single-family detached homes will present a more appealing streetscape with this option, and local residents seeking a lower maintenance lifestyle will have a new option locally in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the proponents on rebuttal? Okay, seeing that, we'll go now to the upper... I'm sorry, Mr. Dickey.
Just like to reiterate, you heard tonight a lot of terminology and terms of calling this a high-density project. We are 2.6 units per acre, which is typical for RS9 development, a single-family, and it's very similar to what is being developed or has been developed around this site already. So low-density at 2.6 is what we're really looking at. There has been some questions about how do you consider, you know, the developmental areas that can't be done. The overall developmental acreage is about 51 acres, so if you take that to the 231 units, then we're at 4.5 units per acre, which is still right in line with the RS9 density of 4.8. So I just wanted to caution you in hearing words such as "high-density" when it comes to this development, which it is not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, seeing no one, we'll now turn to the opponents. You would have three minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing our concerns. You know, as I said before, people just keep showing up. Once again, we have another room full, and we've been here several times. They just don't get fatigued. It's standing room only. And there's a reason why, and it's because we sincerely are concerned. We sincerely are concerned for these kids and everybody that are in this audience, because we see what's coming. And we ask you, we implore you, if you decide to approve this, approve it with conditions. Approve it with conditions that will protect the existing taxpayers and their kids and their elders. Require that the impacted streets have city standards, sidewalks added, as required by city standards. City standard widths. This would include a city sidewalk from the Somerset entry up to the existing sidewalk at the fire station. It should be required as a condition of them doing this, so people can walk and not be afraid. Some form of serious traffic calming on Lockwood is a minimum requirement. Please, if you're going to approve this, please think of our safety. Require traffic calming as a condition of improvement. There needs to be safer control of the intersection at Lockwood and Jonestown Road. You know, they submitted a traffic study in support of this that said that Lockwood is 45 miles an hour. It's 25 miles an hour. They said it was 30 miles an hour on Jonestown. It's 45 miles an hour, and almost nobody goes that fast. They almost all go 50 or 55. There needs to be safer control of that intersection, or you're going to have deaths. We would ask that that be imposed as a condition of approval if you're going to approve this. And some sort of safer control should be put in at Somerset and Jonestown due to the poor sightlines and the increased traffic. Folks, we're not saying they can't build anything over there, but we're asking for you to protect us as well, to consider us as well, because we live here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the opposition?
I wanted to rebut one thing that the True Homes representative said in an early meeting with Mr. Rainier. Sorry to mispronounce your name. I did. In fact, I made a note of it to write down the quote, and he said specifically that the reason for doing this increased density is to improve the absorption rates, and it'll sell-through faster, and they knew that they could build larger homes, which might sell slower and make more revenue, but that they did the smaller homes to deal with absorption rates.
Thank you very much. And I will therefore close the public viewing and ask Mr. Murphy to give the report of
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This is the presentation of the planning board. The petitioner, again, is Hubbard Realty of Winston-Salem on this 88-acre piece of property, and the request is RS9 to RM5S rezoning. I'm going to go through these rather quickly because I believe we've covered a lot of this ground already. This is the subject property shown on the Legacy Growth Management Area Plan. It is in GMA 3, suburban neighborhoods, growth management area. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow, again, on the south side of Somerset, the northeast side of Lockwood, all of this in between Stratford and Jonestown Road. Subject property, again, highlighted in yellow on the aerial photography. This is Somerset Drive, looking west. The property is to the left. This is Somerset Drive, looking to the east. The property is to the right in this image. This is Lockwood Drive, looking south. The property is to the left, and the arrow is the approximate location of the entrance drive into the subject property. This is the area plan map, the Southwest Suburban Area Plan update, which was adopted by city council back in 2015. The recommended land use for this property is single-family residential at 0 to 8 units per acre. I would call your attention to the fact that while this is recommended for single-family residential at a density of 0 to 8 units per acre, it's not out of character to have townhomes in this vicinity. You have some on Jonestown Road. The area plan recommends townhomes along Stratford, and there also are townhomes and multifamily, other types of multifamily development in the Hillcrest Activity Center, which is just to the northeast of the subject property. This is the site plan that went to planning board back in May. I just show that to see how the plan evolved. It was basically a road that went straight through from Somerset to Lockwood, did have single-family around the perimeter with the townhomes to the inside. The subject property, excuse me, the site plan was revised to move the access to the east for better sight distance along Somerset. The, what I would call the spine road, no longer goes directly through from Somerset to Lockwood. There is a turn movement that is required. The number of townhome units were increased based on the other changes that were made to the site plan as the plan evolved, but again, the townhomes still located in the center of the site and open space and single-family residential product along the perimeter. This is just focusing in a little more on those two areas. I'm not going to go into that in too much detail. Again, you've already seen the images of the townhome proposal elevations. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Deputy Director of Transportation, Jeff Fanzler, who will discuss some of the Somerset Heights traffic analysis.
Mr. Fanzler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, member of city council. I'll be briefing my remarks, but I just wanted to go through a few of the traffic details just to provide the context for tonight. You've seen tonight a few times that this site, of course, with the 231 units that are proposed, will generate about 1,800 to 1,900 trips per day. Next slide, please. And as you see, they are distributed over the AM and PM peak hours, and that's how we look at traffic analysis to determine what impacts and recommendations we'll be making. So we wanted to highlight this distribution, traffic distribution slide, to show how we distribute those trips per day, and it's a key point to make because as the site has different means of access, you know, we distribute and balance those sites regarding where the trips are going, where they're coming from. So real briefly, we're showing about 40% to and from the north via Stratford Road, kind of looking at from the Haynes Mall Boulevard area, and then 25% from the south on Stratford Road there, and we anticipate those to split between Lockwood and Jonestown there from the south. And then 25% from the north on the Jonestown roadside, which is the western side of the site, back towards the 421 interchange in the Kestrel Mill area. And then, of course, 10% to and from the east because the connection of Jonestown does align directly with Clemensville, and we do expect some of that traffic to come in directly to the site from Clemensville Road. So slide, please. And just another comparison of how, what the existing site and the existing street network generates from a traffic perspective, and then extrapolating what it will be a full build. And you can see the middle column there shows those existing volumes differentiated between the AM peak, okay, and the PM, and then extrapolated out to the build as an AM and PM comparison. So you see the numbers as they compare as the site gets fully developed over time. Next slide, please. Wanted to take a minute and highlight the access. You've heard tonight that, you know, we work with the site design and trying to figure out how to maximize efficiency and safety and get the best case for sightlines in this curve and really design this intersection here at the drive, the main access, to be as optimal as we can. So notice that we've shifted the access as far to the east as we can to maximize the sightlines. Of course, the TIA and review of the traffic turning movements into the site, we are requiring those turning lanes to accommodate that, so some widening. I'll call your attention to some of the challenges of this site, given there's very little road frontage, so we're having to widen on both sides so we can fit the improvements in on the frontage and make some improved sightlines and get everything kind of worked in this area, given how small frontage that this site really does occupy. But wanted to make the note that turn lanes will be required to get folks out of the thru movement and make a safer movement into the site. Next slide, please. And just wanted to kind of, real briefly, and I'll close with this, is just kind of go over some of the transportation summary comments. And so, of course, you've heard a traffic impact analysis was required, submitted by a licensed professional engineer. Of course, Winston-Salem DOT does take that, review that, and all of its context and all of its assumptions and all of its forecasting ability to determine projections and indicate what are the needs of the site. Site access concerns have been reviewed and analyzed by Winston-Salem DOT in great detail, including many site visits to indicate and to review what is the context and the scenarios that are going on today. And of course, some of the site, as I mentioned, the limited public street frontage really restricts the site accessibility. You know, we're really bound by where we have street frontage and how do we provide access to the site within those confines is often a challenge. And so we worked as best we could moving the driveway around with the site design to maximize those efforts. Of course, and based on the TIA and our review, Winston-Salem DOT, the existing street network has ample capacity to handle the existing, excuse me, the proposed trips that the site will generate, especially considering how the site will be dispersed, the traffic will be dispersed among the road network. And then another note that you've heard tonight as well is attached townhome units do generate less traffic than single-family units, and that's seen through case studies across the country, that's how we come up with that. And then, as I mentioned, the improvements for the TIA, of course, turn lanes will be required, and that includes a widening on Somerset. So all of that being said, and looking at this, Winston-Salem DOT, after review of the TIA, the site plan, onsite visits, existing street networks, and how traffic is coming and going, Winston-Salem DOT staff is recommending approval. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fanzler. Any questions, Mr. Fanzler, at this time, in customer court?
Did you look at all, at the Lockwood street situation?
Say again?
The Lockwood, that's the other road. Did you-
Yeah, Lockwood.
-have any recommendations or analysis of it?
Yeah, so we spent a lot of time on Lockwood and its characteristics and access in and from the site. So of course, Lockwood is about 19 feet wide, 20 feet wide in places, and a lot of those, you know, streets that we are inheriting have the similar characteristics of ribbon pavement and two-way traffic, and of course- And of course, there will be additional traffic on Lockwood. There's no secret there. But from a capacity standpoint, there will be capacity to handle the road. Now, will there be extended delay or will there be increased delay? There, of course, will increase traffic. You have that possibility, but we did consider those impacts.
Customer Cipia?
Mr. Fanzler, I'm not sure if you're the one to answer this, but what's the process on getting sidewalks on some of those streets?
Yeah, so I'm happy to take that question. So those requests are handled through Winston-Salem Department of Transportation, and of course, there is a funding criteria, a funding element to that when we have to consider available funds to pursue something like that. And this is a request that we, as in Winston-Salem DOT, routinely get, and we facilitate those requests, and we add those to our list to apply for future funding when it becomes available.
Have any of the streets in that neighborhood been recommended for sidewalks?
So we have through this, through this--
This--
--this case, yeah, we've heard that there's interest in that.
Okay.
Mr. Larson, have a question?
Yes, yes, I do. I'd sort of share the concern that Lockwood is a narrow street, and I appreciate the fact that maybe it'll carry more automotive traffic. But I think what we're concerned about is pedestrian usage of these recorders as well. And there doesn't seem to be really a plan to add sidewalks or anything to these streets. And I know this is not the developer's responsibility because it's outside of their construction zone. So I guess the question to the city and my colleagues ultimately is, you know, is there going to be a commitment at some point to put in sidewalks or to address the safety for pedestrian bike traffic that we might see in these neighborhoods? And how do we go about locking down on that? That's maybe a question to the city manager.
Mr. Garrett, you want to--
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council. The city has a very large list of capital needs. We are actually working right now to bring a report through the Public Works Committee and onto council that shows all of the capital projects that are already approved by city council. We are really at capacity of what we can build, not just financially, but now with staff time. So what staff would need is direction from council about adding something and removing that priority up and dropping the priority for something else down.
Normally, for sidewalk improvements, is that's an allocation annually for sidewalk work, or is that all bond? Is that all--
Sidewalks are funded in two ways, either completely by local bond money, but in most cases, what we've tried to do is leverage state funding. So we have to go through the process with the TAC to see if it scores high enough for sidewalks, and then we only have to provide our match. So we've been trying to leverage it that way, but there is a large list of sidewalk demand-- requests throughout the community. I mean, there are many, many streets throughout the city of Winston-Salem that are 18, 20 feet ribbon paved with no sidewalks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fanzler. Mr. Murphy, say--
That concludes the transportation portion.
Okay.
And I think I have three or four more slides.
Okay, thank you.
Just a project summary. The request is consistent with the legacy recommendations in that it would provide a variety of housing choices in the area with a context-sensitive design. The request does differ from the recommendations of the Southwest Suburban Area Plan update in that the area plan recommends primarily single-family residential on the subject property at a density of up to eight units per acre. The planning staff believes that the proposed density in development design is consistent with the recommendations of Legacy and the Southwest Suburban Area Plan update in that the proposal offers a variety of housing choices at a density consistent with the zero to eight units per acre density recommended, even though it is a mixed product type. The proposed zoning does have a density of 2.63 units per acre, which is consistent with the density of the neighborhoods within this area. The revised site plan does conform to UDO requirements and provides adequate buffering to natural features onsite and to the surrounding neighborhoods. I will call your attention to an additional condition. This is in your pocket. It is currently in the special use district permit should council choose to approve it. It's in the written consenting conditions, but it is an added condition that was added since the planning board meeting, and it essentially deals with the construction entrance and that the primary construction entrance should be off of Somerset and not Lockwood, but that as they transition to the Lockwood connection, there may be some construction traffic that uses that. But the premise is to try to keep the construction traffic coming in as the development proceeds from northeast to southwest. Again, that has been agreed upon and is in your pocket. With that, this item was heard by the planning board at their May 12, 2022, public hearing. There were numerous speakers in opposition. The concerns then, as you've heard tonight, did center around incompatible density, traffic concerns. There were some stormwater concerns at that time that were voiced, voiced, inadequate infrastructure, and the concern with cut-through traffic. After hearing those concerns, the planning board did vote seven to two to recommend approval of the request. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions related to the rezoning request.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Therefore, I would recognize Councilmember Monday, if you're ready for--
Do you have another question?
I do have another question.
You have a question for Mr. Murphy?
It's not for Mr. Murphy, but I needed-- I wanted to ask the developer, what is the price range for the houses that are being considered for construction? Do we know that? No?
That's not really a question that's appropriate for zoning consideration, so I would request that we not get into that tonight.
All right.
Councilmember Monday?
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W. 3529 as revised before we go to vote. I would like to make some comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Monday, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in my backyard, and I don't know if any of my colleagues have had to deal with a zoning case that is in your backyard on a road that you will be driving yourself every day multiple times. So that being the case, I have examined this case very carefully to see what all of our options are. I've had a couple pieces of learning. As the new person on the council, some of you folks probably already know this, but I'm going to say it anyway. We need to-- I think we need to improve our process on how we communicate to our citizens what zoning is, what it does, what we're actually voting on. I can tell you that probably a third to the half of the people who contacted me understood that if we voted no for rezoning, that that development would not be developed. So we need to be very clear, and I think we need to broaden our circle. I don't know if that's state law or if we dictate what the developer has to do, but I feel like the city has a responsibility in this as well. And we need to explain to our citizens not in engineer ease and not in zone ease and not in legal ease, but they need to understand what we're voting on because I can hear from the comments tonight, folks just don't understand what we can and cannot do in zoning. We're looking at one simple thing, RS9, which will require only single-family homes, or are we going to add townhomes to that option? And the calls I get, the concerns I get, that's not what they understand we're voting on. So that's one thing. The other thing I want to say is so many people made a very valid point. Somerset is a terrible street, and Assistant City Manager Aaron King and the city manager know that I'm still not happy with the proposed solution that has nothing to do with DOT, but I think there are better solutions. In my mind, we're not voting on tonight on that entrance as far as the changes to the street. We are voting on what happens within the confines of the developer's property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I know that I have had several conversations with the city manager, or rather, city attorney to find out what we can and can't do, and we simply do not have the legal authority to make any of the things that you're asking for part of the zoning case. And if anyone would like more information on that, they are-- they can call the city attorney and find out more. But the infrastructure, if we're going to be building 750 new homes a year, we need to improve our infrastructure. What people said about Lockwood, I'm not going to deny that at all. Everything that they said about Somerset is true. If we get the development moving faster than we have our infrastructure, that's just a formula for disaster. In our talks about money for housing, and we know how critical that is, we've not discussed infrastructure. And if there's a shortage of money to do that, you know, as much as I hate to say it, we need to slow down the housing development until we can make sure that the infrastructure catches up to it.
Something that we have talked about on several different cases is, to go to Councilmember Monday's point about infrastructure, we've got potential other ways in and out of this development, this potential development, that are not economical to build. A developer cannot do it and make a profit and therefore stay in business and therefore create housing that we desperately need. And the reason is you got to-- you have to cross a creek or a small stream. So that, to me, is something that I think we need to address as a public, as a government, because, again, it's not-- we're not going to get the houses built that we need if we expect the developer to build those significant infrastructure needs. There's a project that's going to go forward in my neighborhood that has that problem when Mayor Pro Tem's war that happened about a year ago. And so we have to think about the end product that we get and what we're willing as a government to put into those, to fan out the impact of these projects. But right now, we don't have the tools. We don't have the money to do it. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do know for a fact that we have talked about infrastructure and streets and curbing and gutters and sidewalks, part of our housing priorities. We were challenged with Oak Summit Road for years, and their community will show up just like you because now they're building hundreds of homes out there on the northeast side in Councilmember Burke's ward. But I can say that I did, and this council did talk about that, that as we go forward, just like you're seeing, we have to make sure that we get ahead of the infrastructure piece first. Now, as said, that does not mean that we have the money. That does not mean that we have the staff and employees and the engineers. We're at a crucial time right now. But I do want you to know, Councilmember Monday, we already crossed that path, and yes, the infrastructure piece is built in the affordable housing piece because we know that in order to build affordability for housing, that we're going to have to be partners with developers in order to make it happen. But I just want people to understand that, as Councilmember McIntyre said, I don't know how many communities we have, Councilmember Clark, that don't have sidewalks, and the streets aren't wide enough, they don't have curbing. I got curbing, but I don't have sidewalks on my street, on none of it. I have it on Polo Road, but none of it. And the neighborhoods were built like that then. So I mean, I need everybody to take a deep breath. I mean, as one gentleman said, the world is changing, but, you know, we all got to figure out how we're going to coexist together so that others can benefit from a quality of life like many of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Before I get to my planned comments, let me just mention briefly on sidewalks, the demand for sidewalks is five or six times greater than the resources we have. And if we were to put sidewalks in on every road, I've done the math, it's about a billion dollars. City's got 1,000 miles of roads. If you put a sidewalk on either side or just one side, it's hundreds of miles. But anyway, but we do have some possibilities there. Something is going to be built. The question is what's going to be built? I will tell a quick story about something that's happening in the West Ward right now. It's right off of Cliffdale Road, which is very near where a country club crosses Silas Creek. It was about 14 acres down in there, had a lot of old growth. I would say it had some trees in there, easily 150 years old or so. Developer wanted to come in with townhomes, excuse me, duplexes. It was zone RS9. The neighborhood, we had a meeting, it backs up to Guinevere, that was the closest neighborhood. And I told them, I'd do whatever you wanted to do, but I told them, be careful what you wish for. Well, they said they didn't want the town-- I mean, didn't want the duplexes. So I told that to developer. He withdrew the request. About nine months later, they went in and clear-cutted all the land and every tree. I got 35-foot-wide lots that are certainly not in keeping with either the folks on Guinevere or there is a Cliffdale kind of cluster home. It's also near the great-- I call it the Great Wall of China there, that very large wall that's-- it's in that area. My point of that is something is going to be built here, and if I had to pick between the 234 single-family 35-foot-wide lots versus what he's proposing here, I would take this in a heartbeat. If you want to know what that would look like, go look at what's behind, and it's right near you where the houses were built, where the golf course used to be. Those are very, very narrow lots. The developer is willing to trade off from 40- to 50-foot-wide lots and fewer houses in exchange for putting some townhomes in the middle. I will tell you, this is a similar situation to what we have in New Sherwood. If you were to drive down Alister, there are townhomes right in the middle of New Sherwood, three or four different developments down in there. So I think that trade-off is a good one for you, and I have seen the repercussions of what will happen if they go in with 35-foot-wide lots and no trees. Now, having said that, and I did ask the question about Lockwood, I am concerned about traffic because that's always the situation because it's everywhere. I think the Transportation Department did a good job, or as best they could, at Somerset. They're widening the road, putting in turn lanes, things of that sort. I'm not sure we've looked hard enough at Lockwood. I will say, people always say they want sidewalks till the time comes, and most of the time when I have a vote in the West Ward on whether or not people want sidewalks, I'd say 70% of the time they're voted down. Everybody wants the sidewalk, but they want it in any other guy's yard and not mine. It took me 20 years to get a sidewalk on Kirkley's, and if anybody wants to drive down and look at it, it goes four feet from the curb to the curb. It looks like a snake going down there, and that was a great compromise to get that sidewalk in. My point being, don't assume that everybody wants the sidewalk in their yard. But having said that, I don't know if that's the answer, or maybe a little widening of the road. Now, that means everybody's got a little smaller front yard or speed bumps or whatever it may be. I'm certainly amenable to doing something on Lockwood. I'm not-- certainly not an expert to know what to do. But my professional opinion is between the two choices you have, and do not think for a minute the choice is either Woods or what he's proposing. They can go in tomorrow and build all those houses that you saw in there, and I think they're making a reasonable compromise in today's world. Maybe not what you want, but I think it's the better of your two choices. Anyway, that's my two cents in my 21 years' experience sitting here of what gets built. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. We do have a motion, Saka, to approve of W. 3529.
Could I make one closing comment? I did commit, as I was talking to people personally, that I would vote for what the safest option was. There's a little bit of a juxtaposition here. Folks are asking me, us, to vote against it, but to take your safety into consideration. Given these two options, the safer option is voting for RM5 because it produces less vehicle traffic from both streets on a daily basis. That's why I chose that option as the most, as the safest. And the other thing I wanted to commit to you all is I will continue to work with DOT, with the Assistant City Manager, with vegetation, to make the best that we can of what I do acknowledge is a bad situation, particularly on Stratford Road. So after this zoning case, we'll get to work on what we can do on Somerset to address some of those safety issues.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, Saka, to approve W. 3529? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And Councilmember Burke, I need for you to state your vote verbally.
Yes.
Thank you.
Turn it, turn it, turn it, turn it, turn it. Turn it, turn it, turn it, turn it, turn it. Turn it back to the vote.
Mayor, the vote, we didn't turn the screen back in time, but the vote was unanimous with the exception of Councilmember Taylor being excused.
Okay, so vote is seven in favor and one excused. Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Item Z2?
Item Z2, continuation of public hearing on zoning petition of City of Winston-Salem from RSQ to IPL. Property is located on the south side of Humphrey Street, west of Free Street, located in the east ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the August 2, 2022, and August 3, 2022, city council meeting.
Thank you. No one has signed up in opposition to this item. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Okay. I think Councilmember Cipio is going to make a request to continue this item, so I'd recognize her at this time.
Fellow councilmembers, there is an item that needs to, that affects this zoning, that needs to come to our committee meetings next week. And with that, I want to move to continue W.3533 to the city council's meeting on December the 5th, 2022.
Is there a second to continue this item?
Second with a comment I'd like.
Okay. Motion is second, Council, Mayor Protem.
Yes. I'd just like to ask the city attorney, I think you've heard the council last for this, what is the limit on continuation of issues, resolutions, zonings, anything? Because I know the world has changed, but I do know since I've been on the council lately, a lot of things get continued. So I mean, to me, my own, you know, opinion, government works, but government got to do what it does. I mean, just...
Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers, council has not set a limit on the number of continuances. You may recall the Burger King matter, which was continued five, six times, I believe. So it's sort of up to council to decide how long or how many continuances it wants to grant.
Can you check on other cities to see how they handle this?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion to continue this item to, I'm sorry, Councilmember...
To December 5.
December 5. All right. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Don't forget Councilmember Burke.
And Councilmember Burke, if you'd state your...
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z3?
Item Z3, public hearing on zoning petition of Jessica Vasquez from HB to RS7. Property is located on a northwest corner of Akron Drive and Hardwood Street, located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. I would recognize, Councilmember Burke, if you're ready for a motion, or do you want a presentation?
I'm ready for a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move for approval of the statement of consistency for the approval of this item and to W.-3548.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item Z4?
Item Z4, public hearing on resolution approving economic development assistance to Project Bluefin pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, recommended by Finance Committee.
Thank you. Let's, Mr. Millet, to give us just a brief summary of what the council's being asked to do tonight.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem Adams and members of council.
Good evening.
The last time we talked about this project, we referred to it as Project Bluefin. Happy to now say that we can introduce the company as Zeal Abegg Incorporated. The company manufactures motors used in industrial and institutional ventilation systems for a wide range of commercial and industrial applications. It is headquartered in Germany and has 16 production facilities and 4,700 employees worldwide, including one in Guilford County with approximately 200 current employees. Zeal Abegg is looking to expand production and open a new facility to serve as their North American headquarters, as well as their primary production and distribution facility. Winston-Salem and specifically Union Cross Industrial Center is one of several locations being considered, including other sites in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee. The goal is for the facility to be operational by first quarter of 2024. The company's taxable capital investment over five years is expected to be $50.5 million. In addition to the 200 current positions, the project will create approximately 300 new jobs within five years at an average wage of approximately $60,000. The company is seeking financial assistance to reduce its capital outlay associated with the project. The attached resolution authorizes the city to provide up to $632,947 in performance-based economic development assistance. This amount is 50% of the net new property tax revenue expected to be generated in the project's first seven years. North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1 authorizes cities to make appropriations for economic development purposes. Project is consistent with the city's public policy justification to stimulate the local economy through the creation of jobs and investment. Forsyth County has approved incentives for the project, and the state of North Carolina is also considering. We have with us some guests from Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., Mark Owens, Laura Lee, and Ellis Kiefer are here in support of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Millet. Any questions, Mr. Millet? I know we've gone through this several times. Thank you, Mr. Millet. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who would like to be heard on this proposed economic development incentive package? Mr. Owens?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Protem, members of council. Thank you. We'll be quick. I just want to say, on behalf of the Business Committee of Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., we're honored to be able to present this opportunity for this competitive project to locate in the city of Winston-Salem. We are still actively recruiting this company. They have not made a decision, and we're working really hard to show why the city of Winston-Salem is the best place to grow and start and expand your business in America. Your consideration, and hopefully your approval of this opportunity, would help make that competition even stronger and that pitch even stronger for us. I do want to recognize, we have two members of the company that joined us tonight. Jimmy and Greg are with us here.
Welcome.
That have wanted to come and just show that they're interested and appreciative of your consideration. This is really exciting, as we aim to have more job opportunities, more economic mobility in the city of Winston-Salem. 303 new jobs at an average annual salary above the county average is really strong. So we thank you for your consideration, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Thank you.
Therefore, I'll close the public hearing, and I recognize Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. This was reviewed at the Finance Committee and endorsed. Therefore, I move for approval of item Z4.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, if you'd indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Mayor, we need a voice vote from Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Voice vote from Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Thank you. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And to the members of the company, we are looking forward to having you in our city. You're here. Thank you very much. Welcome. Hopefully. In the southeast ward.
And I have housing in the southwest ward.
All right. We have item Z5.
Item Z5, public hearing on ordinance submitting chapters 3, 7, 9, and 10 of the Unified Development Ordinances to revise procedures for submitting and approving applications. Planning Board recommends approval, recommended by Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee.
Mr. Murphy, you want to tell us what we're doing?
I've been challenged 10 seconds. I doubt I can do it that short. But basically...
I was going to ask you to read every single one of those.
Basically, five, four, five, six years ago, we went to an online submittal system. And so everything that's coming into our door that comes to you for planning board comes in electronically. Our ordinance, we never updated it. The ordinance still has references to submitting physical site plans, even the way they have to be folded. Anyway, this is updating the ordinance to get rid of that, and we left enough flexibility in it that even if we change systems, it's still going to be fine moving forward. So with that, it was recommended approval unanimously by the planning board and by the Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in council chamber wishes to be heard on this proposed UDO text amendment? Seeing no one, I declare a public hearing closed. Mayor Protem, this did come into your committee.
That's correct, sir. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, UDO CC18.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Mayor, we need a voice vote.
Councilmember Burke, if you'd state your motion, I mean, your vote.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, item Z6?
Item Z6, public hearing on ordinance granting an extension of franchise for operation of Haynes Mill Road landfill, recommended by Public Works Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Driver, would you tell us what this is about?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council.
Good evening.
This is related to an extension of the franchise agreement to operate the Haynes Mill Road landfill. North Carolina General Statute requires that an applicant for a landfill permit obtain a franchise for the local, from the local government, have a jurisdiction over the site. The franchise to operate the Haynes Mill Road landfill was granted to the Utility Commission in 2000 for a term of 30 years. Currently, the landfill is expected to have a useful life through approximately 2034, based on the current intake of waste. In order to extend the remaining life, staff has submitted an application to amend the permit by constructing an earthen berm around the perimeter of the landfill to increase the capacity of the landfill. The earthen berm would allow additional waste to be deposited within the existing footprint of the landfill. The top elevation of the landfill would not increase, but the life of the landfill would be lengthened. One of the state's technical review comments on this project included requests that the current franchise, which is scheduled to expire in March of 2030, be extended to coincide with the life of the site state permit expiration date of April 9, 2057. Therefore, this item requests approval of an extension of the franchise agreement to operate Haynes Mill Road landfill, and a second reading of this franchise ordinance would also be needed at the November 14 meeting.
Any questions, Ms. Driver? I think it's really good news, we can get another 23 years out of that landfill. That's really good stuff. Thank you, Ms. Driver. This is a public hearing. Does anyone want to comment on this proposed extension of the franchise for the operations of this Haynes Mill Road landfill? Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed and recognize Mr. McIntosh.
I move for approval of item Z6.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And Councilmember Burke, if you'll state your vote.
Yes.
Thank you. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Driver.
The north ward, and the northeast ward, keepers of the landfill.
The trash.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I've got a question, I think, for the city clerk and city attorney. I may be wrong, but I think when I voted on Z3, the verbiage was for Z2. So I want to make sure that we're legal and that we didn't get off track somehow, or if it did, you can fix it on your end, Sandy?
It's, yeah. It's, we're having a delay tonight, so it was Z3.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Monday. All right, councilmembers, as you know, we do have a need to go into a closed session, and Councilmember Clark has a motion.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I moved it to Winston-Salem City Council, go into closed session, presume it to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4 regarding the location of a business within the corporate limits of the city of Winston-Salem.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to go into closed session. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, vote no. We got that one up there, so we'll do it electronically then.
Ask Ms. Burke.
And Councilmember Burke, if you'd state your vote.
Yes.
Thank you. And that is unanimous to go into closed session. So members of the audience, if you would please excuse the city council, if you don't, if you're not related to this item. related to this item. Mr. Murphy, are you still good?
Yes, I am. Thank you for checking, Mayor. Yes, well, I know this project is of great interest to you, so we'll make sure you're plugged in. Yeah, pretty okay. Thanks so much. Yeah, we... What do we... I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I said... Actually, bottom of the floor, it's hard. Oh. This is important. Councilmembers, we have a sweet deal to talk about tonight. Mr. Millet, would you tell us about this, please?
Certainly. Good evening again, everyone. I believe this is the third straight council meeting where we've had to go into closed session for economic development projects. Are you watching... Keep it running in the community, or am I looking to get that, keep that going? So this project does involve an existing company that is going by the name Project Circle. It, for a while, was going by Project Sweet Treat. The project name has changed. I'll let, I'll leave out a mark to explain to the reason for the name change. But know that it is a local company that makes things that lines with loan debt. They are considering sites, other sites in North Carolina, in Georgia, and Ohio. They do have capacity at their Winston-Salem facility, so it is obviously under consideration as well. The project would need the retention of 37 existing jobs, as well as the creation of 180 new jobs, as well as an average of $17 per hour and an investment of $5.2 million. We have been advised that if the project does not locate in Winston-Salem, that the 37 existing positions will go along with the facility as in closing the facility. The positions would leave the community. We've also learned that incentives are an important part of the equation that the company is using as part of its evaluation process. So given those reasons, the importance of job retention, job creation, and the location that is in East Winston, is in a neighborhood revitalization strategy area, we've put together an incentive package that's, we think, is pretty aggressive for us. So what is proposed is 50% of net and property taxes over a period of 70 years, based on that investment of $5.2 million. That incentive would be $102,800. And based on estimated sales tax revenue from the new positions that would be created at the facility over those seven same years, those same seven years, would generate approximately $43,300 for the incentive package. Then there are also guidelines in our economic development guidelines. There's a policy that allows for job creation, that positions are hired and retained for a year from the NRSA, in its neighborhood revitalization strategy area. The company can qualify for an additional $1,500 per job, up to a maximum of 10% of the total property tax portion of the incentive. So all that means is that it's 10% on top of that $102,000 that I mentioned earlier. So when we combine net property tax, net and property tax, and sales tax, and the bonus incentive, the proposed incentive totals $156,380. They are requesting incentives from the county, as well as a building reuse grant from the state. If the project receives support here today, it will be on the agenda for Finance Committee next Monday. I mean, I'll send some greater Winston-Salem emails, because I know you're with us, and I'm supportive of this project as well. Still, there's, Mr. Lee, you got more addy things to this? Thank you, Mr. Lee. There are two councilmembers, Roy and Alice Keever, our team, I first want to recognize that they're doing a lot of the hard work, and they're incredible. Also, I just want to thank Ken. Ken has been incredibly involved in this process. And we've talked to you about both in the entire part of our city, and that we believe this has been of the largest job opportunities in Winston-Salem in all time. There's 180 jobs, as rare as those 37. We are not alone in the area, so we can tell you the name of the company, Chris McCray. We would just ask that you not use that name in front of the media at this point, but that is the name of the company, obviously. Say it again. So, Mayor Protim, it is a sweet deal this time. I know, guys, he says it a lot, but this time he misses. So this is, you know, we have tried to be very creative to make sure that this is a priority project. You know, we've worked with our county, you know, asking for a little bit more in the seven years. Ken's been really creative, as we want to make sure we look at the area focus and making sure that there's opportunities for all of our citizens in the city. We also have grants to the River Park Development Authority Fund. They had a meeting tonight, Mr. Mayor, that I believe have provided some support, as the city and the county also support as well. We want to win this project. We want to win to be able to say our Ivy Avenue plant, Councilmember Burke on the screen, our Ivy Avenue plant, this is where that, those jobs would get. And we have been terribly, very, very proud by the company that these other sites are rather than playing in other states and other cities. And we feel that we have a little bit of that acclaim to Chris McCray, and we want to really make sure we invest in all of that community. So we thank you. We're happy to answer questions that you may have, or add any additional information. Building reuse for site tech, cleaning program, city, county, and local pet, we really are turning over every rock that we can to make this a priority project. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Councilmember Burke is fully involved in this, and Councilmember Burke can be one of the, I think, in the right direction here.
I do. Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you so much, Mark, and Mr. Millet. This is a sweet deal. We're talking about 217 jobs in the area, in the revitalization area specifically. This would just be a shot in the arm for our community, and so we welcome Chris McCray to the community. Great deal. Now, my family bought the Montebell after First House, 1964. We moved to Oklahoma Avenue, which was like, starved swells for Chris McCray. My uncle started relocating, relocated, my brother, my daddy's brothers, my mother's brothers, all of them worked at Chris McCray on their way to accumulate enough money to get to Philadelphia, where they worked in the J's in the 60s. And one thing that was very apparent in our neighborhood was that we smelled Chris McCray every day, 24 hours a day, with smelly, the doughnuts. My elders used to bring us bags of doughnuts home to us, because we didn't eat them. But one of the things that I need everyone to understand, and I'm sure this council does, we've lost a lot in the past decades of companies that started here with the citizens of Winston-Salem, their group, they became friends, we all know, and they left us. We cannot fail to lose Chris McCray. Because Chris McCray, even if you see the specials on the food that made him mad, on his reach out, it shows Winston-Salem, the grand, the grand man, look at it. It shows Winston-Salem at the beginning of Chris McCray, and how he grew and is better. Chris McCray is just as synonymous to Winston, as with people here in Winston-Salem, and they think of Ron, and American Airlines, and they think of P. Ma, and Ma Cooley, and Winston-Salem. We cannot lose Chris McCray. So if you turn it over, you're not going to win. Turn it over, you're not going to win. It's going to the city of Winston-Salem. We can't. I mean, if we lose Chris McCray, it's not a good, it's just not a good thing for us right now. You know what I mean? Just...
How much you ask? I think, I think we're back to, I'm like you, Councilmember Burke, I think we've pushed to have encouraged, Ken, they did a really good job, the county government's been innovative ways and calculations, sales tax, and networks. Councilman McIntosh. You know, we sit on the rules, kind of turn those cities, we sit on the rules. A lot of times, there's really nothing the city council can do about those decisions. This is a case where we can do something, and I agree with you, but, Mayor Protim, we need to lock this one down. If possible. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. In anticipation of you folks' response, I have been, uh, promoted. I'm willing to reauthorize city staff to break this proposed economic development project to the Finance Committee for discussion as soon as possible, and subsequently to City Council for... The council board, a second's half, I suspect.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
All right. I'll run the thing. For the next deal.
Closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're back into open session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjournment.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. We are adjourned.
We have known this now. Cut out.